You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 4th special meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www accesseslaportecity.org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 4th Council Workshop. We are affording this evening the team from the Homeward Bound Association, if that's a title.
Homeward Bound Village.
Homeward Bound Village, yeah, and Sandy Keller is going to give a presentation on what about the Homeward Bound Villages and just just for a little background for the council and for the public that Sandy had spoken to the mayor right after the first year after she came into office and then the mayor suggested that she talked to myself, being the president of the city council and city planner of Skyler York. We sat down in February and had a discussion and Sandy presented this and I promised Sandy that I would get the ordinance, the audience of the city council and we got five out of nine here this night and they had reasons for not being here. But anyway, Sandy, go ahead, explain the project and then we'll take questions or comments from the council afterwards.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do I have a microphone? Yep, there we go. Thank you, President Preszbalinski. I really want to thank you for allowing me to come here today. I know it's extra time out of all the work that you do for the community. My name is Sandy Keller. I'm a resident of LaPorte County and I'm the president of Homeward Bound Villages. I am really privileged to represent our organization and share about our project with you. Also with me today are several of our board members and we have a couple additional board members that are online. My experience has been just incredible to work with some of the most dedicated people that care deeply about the community. And as you'll see, as we look at timelines incredibly persistent to really see this kind of solution come about. Homeward Bound Villages is bringing affordable housing to LaPorte County using a cooperative living model. This model has achieved success across the United States with two of the best examples being in Texas and Oregon, but there are many more successes across the United States. It allows rents to remain permanently affordable. We build with sustainability as a focus. Thank you. And residents are involved in decision-making about the care and operation of their community. Homeward Bound Villages was founded in 2017 to address the need for affordable housing in LaPorte County. We seek to provide an innovative model with proven success for affordable housing. We can't do this alone and we intend to work alongside community leaders and community stakeholders to create our cooperative housing solutions. We know these solutions improve the lives of residents, but also the broader community where our villages exist. Here I'd like to speak to where we started and where we are going as an organization and in particular, our first project, which is Carwick Village. Homeward Bound was officially founded in 2017 as a 501(c)(3) charitable organization. In that time up to 2021, we've organized to make sure that we are properly set up and equipped to support the goals of our organization and our project. We did a lot of learning and listening. In 2021, we found the appropriate setting for our first village and purchased the property at 316 South Carwick Road. We own this land and we will retain ownership of this land. In this year, we also rezoned from R1(c) single-family to R3(a) multi-unit low-rise. We secured our funding to move into pre-construction planning for our project. In 2022, we spent considerable time on community feedback and incorporating this into the design of our project. And let me talk about these community feedback sessions a little bit. We invited people that we anticipated were likely to live in our community as well as quite a few people that were in mental health and social services in the community. We had tables set up, lots of little cutouts for houses, for ponds, for paths, for walkways, for barbecue grills, for roads, for driveways, all kinds of things that people could play around with to construct their village. We created some constraints around that so they didn't build some things that weren't possible for us to do. And it wasn't so much in these activities that we were looking for the design as much as really listening to the things that were important to people. How did they orient the homes and why? What sort of safety considerations did they talk about? What features and amenities were they looking for? And these were really instrumental in incorporating some of these features, design features, into our design that you'll see later in the presentation. One other thing that we did had a large space in Michigan City inside of a building where we put on the floor, one of our units, constructed walls or partial walls. We put some reel and play furniture in there and let people really walk in and see what that space was like to live in, how the furniture was arranged, how the rooms might be placed, and really had some great feedback from that session as well. In 2022, we completed our construction development planning. Moving into 2023, by early 2023, all the Michigan City departments signed off of our construction development plan. This was considerable thanks to Mr. York and really helping to shepherd that through along with our partners at Global Engineering. We also worked on our funding strategy and secured partial funding. Moving into 2024, starting this year, we are beginning to pull together our package for bidding on site development work. We anticipate construction to begin by this summer and we continue to secure 100% of our funding for Carwick Village Phase 1. This includes Michigan City American Rescue Plan, we'll talk about today, the Indiana Ready Grant, and the Health Foundation. By December 2024, we expect to welcome our first residence and by second quarter of 2025, construction should be 100% complete for Carwick Village Phase 1. So everything we do as an organization centers around our mission and our mission is to create community through affordable housing. We're taking our mission and we're moving it into action through our strategy. And I am going to read this if you'd like to follow along. Our strategy is to give the power of decision-making and pride of ownership to local residents while providing support and partnerships needed to ensure long-term success through our cooperative community framework. This proven concept builds community and provides housing to those most at risk in our community. And we're fulfilling this strategy by creating permanently affordable homes in a cohesive community setting right here in Michigan City. In these next few slides, I'll talk about the priorities and needs in Michigan City and LaPorte County and how our project furthers the goals of Michigan City. Vibrant Michigan City is a priority for Michigan City and I suspect you are all very familiar with the goals and the playbook. It's not surprising that housing is a priority and specifically affordable neighborhood housing. The housing needed is described as in the vibrant playbook is safe, affordable, and needing more multifamily. In the "how" portion of the playbook, it specifies the need to identify partners to accomplish this priority. Carwick Village is multifamily. It's affordable to those with extremely low incomes and will be a safe neighborhood community in Michigan City. Further, Homeward Bound Villages is not only ready to build, we are ready to be that partner. We want to be a long-term partner to help increase capacity for Michigan City to reach its affordable housing goals. Affordable housing is a national problem and a local problem. It's pretty prominent in every community and every conversation. We know that what happens in the county happens in Michigan City, especially with it being the largest city. I know many of you are very familiar with the challenges right here in Michigan City in regard to affordable housing, but let me touch on a few key points. The Vibrant Community Study in LaPorte County projected a shortage of over 1,400 low-income rental units. 48.3% of LaPorte County renters spend more than 30% of household income on rent. This means they spend more than 30% of their income on housing, which leaves them struggling to meet other basic needs. Additionally, a staggering 76% of renters in LaPorte County with household incomes between 30 and 50% of area median income are cost-burdened. All this tells us is that there are many people in our community at risk for being housing insecure because paying rent at such a high percentage of your income makes you makes it really difficult to cover other expenses. If you become sick, you might not be able to afford to go to the doctor or cover expenses. You probably sacrifice healthy food to cover a car repair. This unstable condition creates serious health impacts. We know from additional LaPorte County data, there is a significant number of seniors in this group as well. Carwick Village is targeting people with incomes at this level, 30 to 50% of area median income, and we intend to keep rents within the recommended best practice of no more than 30% of the household income. So let's look closer at the Michigan City rental market. The Vibrant Michigan City cites a lack of new homes being built. We know this puts a strain on the existing housing market, both rental and ownership, and drives up prices. People earning 30 to 50% of area median income are often excluded from subsidized solutions because they work. They typically don't qualify for support because of the income level that they're at, but they can't afford to meet their basic needs of food, housing, transportation, and medical care. This is especially true in Michigan City where there are limited affordable housing options that are not subsidized or vouchedered, and you probably know that even those solutions have extremely long waiting lists. And because this is a countywide problem, it puts an additional strain on the Michigan City housing stock. So let's look at current rental prices. These are cited from rent.com, which is a leading authority on rental data. A studio apartment in Michigan City this year averages over $700, a one-bedroom 820 and a two-bedroom $1,100. Thinking about a real-life example, if a person works 40 hours a week at minimum wage, it's a decent job and maybe all they can do right now. They earn about $1,260 per month. So this means even with a studio apartment, they're paying more than half of their wages in rent. If you look at the chart on the right, you see that there are zero units in Michigan City categorized in the $500 to $700 range regardless of size. Carwick Village will have one- and two-bedroom units with rents ranging from $400 to $700. More notably, people could be moving in this year. The reason Homeward Bound is here today is that we believe it's the right place at the right time. We know Michigan City is poised for growth and significant projects coming about. The double-track, which will bring more people in and out for work in Michigan City, and potential sites for extended housing with the state prison coming out in a few years and the NIPSCO site. As an organization, we don't want to leave anyone behind. We want to make sure that as Michigan City grows, that everyone can enjoy this growth opportunity. We know that house prices and rental prices will only continue to increase. The timing is right for this request regarding the American Rescue Plan funds. We know that the global pandemic sidelined many affordable housing projects and caused housing prices and material prices to skyrocket, not just locally, but globally and nationally as well. These funds in particular were set aside to help communities reduce harm and other impacts. Carwick Village is a solution to the affordable housing problem that is ready for development. In these next few slides, I'll be covering more about our project and the model we'll use for all of our projects. As I said, our location is 316 South Carwick in Michigan City. Let me just orient on the map. The upper left is Lake Michigan. The red rectangle is our location on Carwick Road. It is just adjacent from Potawatomi Country Club. If you follow Carwick Road to the north, where it intersects with Route 12, that is just a mile away. That's the location of Carwick Plaza, Al's Grocery Store. I think most of you are probably familiar with that location. This site was specifically chosen by our organization. So not only does it meet the needs for what we're trying to do in this location with open space, green space, walking trails, residential units, it additionally is on a transportation route. It is within a one-mile radius of essential shopping, parks, and schools. And this means convenient access for people who won't require a car. Let me talk a little bit about the past condition of this site. Michigan City provided a letter to Homeward Bound designating this site as vacant and abandoned. Here you can see a few structures when it had been abandoned and still in disrepair. The city did take these structures down, but the property remained abandoned and overgrown. We know as an organization where you have areas of blight and vacant properties that has a health impact on the community and the local neighbors. As civic leaders, I think you can all relate to a study from the National Institute of Health and these points, that vacant land affects community well-being, contributes to fractures between neighbors, attracts crime, and can make residents fearful. It can impact physical health through injury, buildup of trash, and affect mental health through anxiety and stigma. Homeward Bound has subsequently cleaned up the property. We've removed trash and we completed a significant site clearing last fall. This site is now a visible asset to the neighborhood and ready for construction. If you haven't driven by the site or don't go by that area, I really encourage you, there is a little turn-in in the driveway and you can stop. You can get out and walk the site, but you can see quite a bit just from that street. It's been our goal to make sure that this site stays clear. Carwick Village is Homeward Bound Villages' first project in LaPorte County and we really want to be a good neighbor and a good community neighbor. Now I'll move into our cooperative model and Carwick Village. Carwick Village is the name of the village on Carwick Road. It's our first project as an organization and I want to talk about how the cooperative works, why it's unique, and why it has been so successful in other communities that use it. You see from this diagram how all the pieces interconnect: forever affordable, sustainable dwellings, cooperative community. Our housing at Carwick Village and all of our intended properties will be forever affordable. This is done by Homeward Bound acting as a land trust and through our cooperative ownership structures. We operate on a cooperative model that emphasizes collaborative decision-making amongst the community. We want our members to have a stake in their community, to have a say in their community. And it is through their village board that is made up of the residents that village members have this say and will care about what happens in their community. Additionally, we construct with sustainability in mind. We build using environmentally friendly principles. We build a little smaller while being sufficient in size for comfortable living. We build with energy efficiency and on smaller lots to make better use of land. And lastly, we create a cohesive community through shared spaces and amenities such as community gardens, open spaces, and a community building for social gathering. The front porches face into the center of village to encourage interactions among residents. There are walking trails at the back of the community so that village members, young and old, can be out walking. And we know that this aspect of being out and about really creates those interactions and that true sense of neighborhood and community. We want to be eco-conscious. We want our affordable homes to be nice homes, but to be efficient. Our homes consume less energy. The size of our homes is in line with the projected demographic trends in LaPorte County, also in the Vibrant Community Study for an increase in one- and two-person households. This is not just due to an aging population, but also a preference of younger individuals. As part of our goal to be eco-conscious, we worked with an energy design company and have a positive diagnostic rating for this pre-construction design you see here. We're proud that in keeping with this goal to be eco-friendly, we rated above the Indiana Energy Code for our construction project. This will ensure that we keep operational costs low. Now that we've talked about the building, I want to talk about the community aspect. Without that community aspect, we're essentially just building homes. What sets Carwick Village apart, and by extension, Homeward Bound Villages and the communities we create, is our cooperative model. This means, as I mentioned earlier, that a board is made up of village residents and they have governance over the community and a say in their village. They make collective decisions about the community initiatives and how they choose to foster community. Residents do not own their homes. They rent their homes so the model is able to evolve and meet the needs of the community long-term. Homeward Bound retains ownership of the land and structures. Homeward Bound is responsible for long-term maintenance and the co-op members are responsible for day-to-day care and general upkeep. And this aspect of really caring for their community also is a feature that helps to keep the operating costs affordable and low. Homeward Bound will additionally provide a part-time staff member to support the co-op administratively. We're not going to assume that these sort of skills and capabilities are among the residents, so that part-time staff person will support administratively with things like helping the board understand how to run a board, what does it mean to run a board or any committees of the board, filing necessary papers, paying utility bills, making sure administratively that things are operating well within the village. You can see on this concept design the compact nature of the physical community, yet there is open space available for use by members as well as a community building, which will include laundry and a full-size kitchen. In front of you, I had intended to get a poster and that was kind of foible today. So you do have a sheet in front of you. There's definitely some extras here if anyone would like to come up and pick up any of these extra copies. It shares a lot... I lose the mic. It just includes a lot more detail of the overall property beyond the image that is This part of the property that you see on the screen with the buildings in the open space is just over one acre in size. On your paper shows the back half of the property where you can see additionally the opportunity for walking trails. It is heavily wooded on the back of the property, but really almost close in size is the front part that we're constructing on, so lots of lots of space there. The project will be built in two phases and while I have this visual up, let me explain the phases. Phase 1 includes all of the site development work, which is excavation, utilities, driveways, parking, and sidewalks, plus two residential buildings. The residential buildings are the purple unmarked boxes and there's three units in each building. Phase 2 includes the two remaining residential buildings and the community building. We're asked again and again how we keep our villages affordable, so let me reinforce three important aspects of our approach. Homeward Bound Villages acts as a land trust. This means our villages will never be subject to market rate fluctuations or profit motive. Our villages are used are built using principles of sustainability, which keeps operating costs low. And lastly, 100% of construction is funded. This results in low rents able to cover all operational costs, both day-to-day and long-term. What Homeward Bound is doing is to provide tangible and timely solutions to Michigan City to fill this desperate need in LaPorte County. Let's look here to reinforce again the problems and solutions Homeward Bound is implementing. We know the Vibrant Michigan City playbook cited the lack of affordable housing for Michigan City. Carwick Village is targeting people with incomes at 30 to 50% of area median income. Because this income level is just above poverty level, they often don't qualify for subsidized housing. Homes at Carwick Village will be forever affordable due to Homeward Bound acting as a land trust. Mental health issues result from people being housing insecure. You know, most of us just can't even really imagine what it would be like to not know where you're going to live tomorrow, but lots of people live that reality every day and it takes a toll on health. With our cooperative model, this really gives people breathing room. It lets them prioritize other things in their life, like their care, their learning, their financial stability. And lastly, another point that was talked about in the Vibrant Michigan City playbook was building community and placemaking. Homeward Bound Village model creates cohesive community where neighbors provide support and care for each other in their neighborhood. This not only benefits the surrounding community, those just adjacent to the property, but the broader community of Michigan City. I've talked about the need in LaPorte County, our co-op model, and our location and our plans for the village. Now I'd like to talk about funding and other support for our project. We have worked really hard on this project. When I introduced myself to Dr. Cora, he, in his previous county council or county commission positions, remembers all the way back in 2018, talking to someone about some of the goals of Homeward Bound. And if you've ever worked on a construction project, whether it's small, personally your own, or a larger project, you know that it's just a really heavy lift. So we are at the spot where we can reach 100% of our funding and you can see from this list of sources that we are attracting broad support for our project. We've established many partnerships and will continue to do so, but I'd like to highlight a few key relationships here. Global Engineering, DH2W Architecture and Energy Diagnostics are partners that have provided in-kind donations, saving Homeward Bound significant dollars in our development planning process. Michigan City has really come through to make it easy to do business, both in the rezoning process. Some of you were part of that and some of you, it was before you were serving on the council, as well as the departmental review and sign-off of our development plan. Additionally, Mayor Nelson Deitch has provided a letter of support for our Indiana Ready 2.0 grant application. We have referral agreements in place and intend to seek more so that we are able to identify and reach those most in need in our community when it comes time to admit residents into Carwick Village. The last components of our funding are the Indiana Ready Grant and the Health Foundation funding, which both of these have been requested. I am here today to specifically initiate our request for the American Rescue Plan funding of $345,000. You can see that these two funding sources, Ready and Health Foundation, along with the funding request today for the American Rescue Plan, puts us at 100% of funding for Carwick Village Phase 1. for Carwick Village Phase One. Regarding the Indiana Ready Grant and the chart you see here, I understand that Michigan City submitted a Ready Grant, but if you're not familiar with this grant, it has a strong requirement in order to remain competitive that for this grant must be a majority of the project is privately funded, and that there is a match of local public funding. Ready expects a match of local public funds at least equal to the amount of funding provided through Ready. You can also see from this chart that we have significant private investment taking place in Michigan City and our Carwick project. Again, Michigan City American Rescue Plan funding puts our funding at 100% and ensures not only that we start construction, but that we can ensure completion. We are, you know, really getting excited to be so close in the potential of future residents this year. As I mentioned on the last side, the Ready Grant requires a local public match to remain competitive. This is why we were really pleased to receive the letter of support from Mayor Nelson Deitch that we submitted with our application in January. This letter, of course, was not a commitment. We'll need a commitment to remain competitive for this funding match. One thing I just want to add here, about the $345,000 amount, I probably should have made a note of that. It wasn't an arbitrary amount to get the math to work. It was an amount that equals our estimate for the site development work, which we thought was really in line with the types of things that the city is typically involved in, infrastructure-type initiatives and enabling construction development. In summary, our village is built for Michigan City. Carwick Village directly addresses the current and urgent need for affordable housing in La Porte County and Michigan City. We believe our innovative design and cooperative community approach is just incredibly unique and an opportunity to have this come to the Michigan City community and continue to develop more. It will be an environment and place that people want to live and play. I know it's important, at least for a few of you that I've spoken with, particularly President Preszbalinski, that we prioritize Michigan City residents, current residents, for residency at Carwick Village. We are absolutely open to collaborating on this request and to work through ideas and facilitate this need. I'm happy to take your questions, and I just want to leave a placeholder here before we're done. If you would just afford me a few minutes to be able to understand next steps and sort of how does this process work? And with that, I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I welcome your questions.
Good question.
Yes.
Can you roll back so I can see that total block?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, slide 19.
I'm new at this. Been doing this for, what, nine years now? Yeah, can you roll back so we can see? There it is, 1.349. Thank you. Let me write that down.
I have several questions, Mr. President, whenever you have. First of all, how much land do you have here now?
The total property is about an acre and a half. We have a wetlands classification on the property, so it really works out nice to keep the back wooded, but we are required to remain 50 feet from the classified wetlands for construction, so that's why we are, you know, working on the front portion of the community or of the land for construction.
Now, from what you presented, this will be fully funded, so there won't be any financing?
That is correct.
So what will happen to the rents that the residents are paying?
You mean, where does the money go?
Yeah.
So in a cooperative model, I mean, it's not a for-profit, and so it sustains the operation of the community. Homeward Bound Villages will receive the rents and the income. The community will retain some of that money for day-to-day operations, and we will plan for long-term maintenance.
And whom are you anticipating will be the residents here? Like, you know, we have like a homelessness problem in Michigan City.
Sure, sure, sure.
Are you targeting them, or like, who are the folks who are going to come and occupy these apartments?
Yeah, that's a great question. It does require that you have an income. You have to have an ability to pay. We are targeting low income, but we are not subsidizing rents for individuals. So while we absolutely envision that individuals experiencing homelessness will be applicants to Homeward Bound Villages as they work to remove themselves from conditions that might have caused homelessness, perhaps losing a job, or perhaps, you know, whatever those conditions might be, that it is seniors, it is young people, they are students, they are middle-aged, they are people that just happen to fall in that income range. We understand from data that the demographic in that income range and that household size is largely an older population. I shouldn't say elderly, or I'd be putting myself in there. But we will apply for housing laws in the application process, so we will not discriminate on housing, but we will certainly look for ways to prioritize needs and benefits in the application process.
So you're saying these are folks who don't qualify for any housing subsidies currently?
They typically don't. In that 30% to 50% income range, it's difficult to qualify or show the greatest need to get in front in the line in subsidized housing. But we do also know that there are just extremely minimal options for subsidized housing in La Porte County and within Michigan City.
You know, from my perspective, I think the whole housing thing has to be addressed in a comprehensive manner. I appreciate what you're doing. Don't get me wrong. And then we need to figure out a way of how do we address this homeless situation? How do we address the needs of young professionals or people who are growing up here who want to come back? I think it has to be a comprehensive strategy. And then, I don't know, I'm new on this council, but there are a lot of competing priorities or needs for this little, whatever money we have, so we need to figure that out, you know? Where does this need? Like, as you mentioned about the symmetry thing that was, when we walked into this, there are so many different things that are being addressed. But it's a good plan, and I appreciate your efforts and the efforts of your entire board to address this in a very cooperative manner. And in the past, I have been exposed to this, as I mentioned, when I was in the county commission, and I think at that time, I think we were approached for the county home property, and then we were asked to provide money to rehab the county home, which would have taken like millions of dollars, rehab that county home. And so that's the reason why it fell through. Those were some of my comments, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, Doctor.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. I know Dr. Cora asked in regards to who would be the type of families that you're looking for, but with this being a land trust and in regards to where would the rent go? And with the land trust, this is just rent. They cannot lease to own this property, so the funds or the rent fees will go back into the land trust. At what percentage then is put back into the community within?
Yeah, the land trust does not have a financial component to it. It's simply a mechanism that we act as a land trust to protect that it is a nonprofit-run organization and that the co-op will not be allowed to decide what they charge for rents. So we retain ownership of the land and the structures and the ability to not allow market rate increases to occur.
And so with that being said, then, so do the board, then? Are they allowed to make those decisions, which would then tie in with the application process of not singling out any individuals? Do applications, would they go before the board for review? And/or since it is based off of low income and you do not provide subsidizing, will not be available, then what is the financial threshold are you looking at if it's over for those that do need or have subsidized income housing?
So let me make sure I understood your questions. It sounds like you're trying to understand how the decisions are made about who is admitted? And then I wasn't, yeah.
Well, I understand the who's admitted.
Okay.
I understand the question in regard, my question in regards to whether it be in the land trust and where the rent goes and how that those funds go back into the village. So you indicated that they're low income, but you do not provide subsidizing.
Correct.
Correct. So what is the financial threshold for the applicant to apply?
Yeah, so their threshold is to be at 30% to 50% of area median income for most of our targeted units. That means if you look at HUD income levels, right? So we income qualify on admissions. If they fall in that range, then we look at can they actually afford 30% of their income in order to pay the rent?
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, I should have thought to bring the chart to talk in real dollar numbers of what those income ranges are.
Okay, and then I saw on the chart in regards to you're at the 100%, but there's no commitment letter at this time. However, if I'm understanding correctly for your phase one, you would possibly be seeking a request for ARPA funds?
That is why I'm here today.
And so of the $345,000?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And is that the only funding? You have everything else? Is that the only?
So if you go back to the slide that Mr. Dabney had asked to have re-presented? 19, I think it was?
What'd you say?
He said we'd be funding about 25%.
Of that 30?
Of that 1.3 million.
Right, 345,000.
Yep, maybe about 25% of that total.
Yeah, so if you look at the top items, it shows approved. Those are funding that we have secured. The other two I mentioned have been requested. Those are in disposition phase because of their grant cycles. We do believe that we are highly competitive, or we're at least intending to remain highly competitive for those two funding requests. And then the American Rescue Plan funding for Michigan City would put us at 100% for Carwick Village.
And these are just for Michigan City residents or any incoming?
So anyone living in Carwick Village will become a Michigan City resident. What Mr. Preszbalinski has requested is that we work with you to consider how we can prioritize and what way we prioritize current residents of Michigan City for admissions to Carwick Village. And so because of the complexities around that, not understanding what your priorities are for how that might work and the mechanics around it, we really want to take that kind of conversation offline and work with you, but absolutely willing to facilitate that dialogue and work to how we honor that request from you.
Is it possible, for example, you have those that apply for Section 8? For those who income exceed eligibility for Section 8, would it be possible to discuss with them those that their income exceeds their eligibility to be the next ones to be reviewed, to possibly apply?
You know, that is certainly something that we could evaluate. What is our pipeline and how do we prioritize anyone in the pipeline? Is it people that are already gone through and applied for some sort of housing? Yeah, hadn't thought about that, but that would certainly be something to evaluate, understand a little bit more how that might work. What would be your thought or consideration in those individuals having priority?
Because they're needing housing, but they're over income? Just like we have, you know, people that needs repairs on their homes. We have many different grants available, but they're just over that threshold and not, they're not eligible. So there are still families that need housing that is above income for Section 8. They're working and they're seeking home, seeking a residence or a place to stay.
Okay.
So I would think, would they be able to be considered before opening it up? And then I guess that will also take me to the question, are you having families already being, not considered, but do you have a waiting list already?
We have not opened an application cycle. No, 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 no. One thing I want to, you know, make sure there is a real distinction, and I know Homeward Bound Villages cares deeply about this, that we are not confused with a government-provided subsidized solution. We believe this cooperative community is something that is very unique, that empowers individuals. We believe this kind of village and this kind of community will be vastly different than typical subsidized structures and units, and we really want to differentiate what we are doing from those types of solutions. And so partnering with an entity that is a government entity to have, you know, our pipelines join would be an interesting dialogue, but we would want to be careful that we are not associated as a government entity providing similar type of subsidized solutions. We really want to reinforce the aspect of people having agency for decision-making, of having some empowerment, of having, you know, something that is theirs, a say in what goes on in the area that surrounds them, and really feeling like they have some control in aspects of their life and their surroundings.
Yep, a quick question. Are there periods where the people who are in the village, are they reviewed to see if there's changes in income? I mean, somebody could move in there and they're right over that qualification line, then all of a sudden they find a job that's paying them now so much money, and would they be reviewed at some point? Because, you know, that person can then just kind of sit and stay and then keep someone else who's needy of getting in that. Is that mechanism worked in the process? I would think so.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we wrestled with this quite a bit. We researched it a lot, and let me just share a little bit about what we learned. People who constantly have their income verified creates instability. It de-incentivizes people to work and improve their lives. And that was a serious consideration for us because we honor, we respect, we prioritize we honor, we respect, we prioritize giving people agency to make decisions in their lives and not feel like someone is constantly looking over them. Um, and and challenging decisions that they're making about what they choose to do with their work or their life or anything else. Um, what we also found as we um, researched other organizations using this model is that people's incomes who increased either became an incredible asset to the community, the village, because they're constantly giving back, because they come, they 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 are able to become better community partners and contributors, or that they move on on their own because they want more, because they are able to afford more. And they um, self-select isn't quite the word, but but other opportunities um, are afforded them. So we learned that that um, has taken care of itself from all of the examples that we looked at. And therefore, we made the decision to prioritize not um, feeling like we're policing
Right.
um, individuals and what is happening within their lives.
Thank you. I really appreciate your knowledge of this and this this whole project. So so thank you.
Thank you.
Another question I had, yeah, another question I had was, does this entity pay property taxes?
That's a great question. We're hoping not. Um, however, uh, some of the models that we've looked at um, are uh, not exempt from property tax. And so we still have yet to determine that. Um, it's only in other states that we have looked at examples where they um, are required to pay property tax. And uh, and so we have yet to determine that until we have something specific to go before the tax board. Um, we've built that in that we can afford that within the um, the business plan for the operations of the village. But um, yeah, we'd we'd love to save the money and not not pay the tax on that.
And from even though you that's how you feel, but from the from the municipal government standpoint, we want to have entities that pay property taxes, that we have the resources to take care of the city also. And I just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, it that's that's absolutely a concern. Um, and I and I um, couldn't agree with that more. The um, the desire to have properties that transform and that they bring um, the needed revenues into the city. Um, I would, you know, just ask you to also consider the incredible cost burden that it is on a community for people who are of lower incomes. People who become unhoused, become unstable. They um, end up heavily using um, the healthcare system in emergency scenarios because they often don't have healthcare. Um, the cost of people at lower incomes with housing insecurity and being unhoused is um, a phenomenal um, burden, financial burden on a community. And so we really hope that uh, this begins to be a an an offset um, for some of that cost that is already um, being incurred by the by the community, by the municipality.
Thank you. Will water, gas and electricity be included in the uh, rent amount? Or is that separate that they would pay on their?
What the best practice is, and this is a HUD guideline, is that um, rent and utilities stay within thirty percent of a person's income. So that is our forecast on our um, pro forma or business plan. It is um, when I mentioned the energy diagnostic rating and ener, I'm sorry, yeah, the energy diagnostic rating. Um, we put every single component of our home, including um, the heating, the cooling into a calculator uh, with energy diagnostics, the company energy diagnostics. And it provides us with incredibly accurate utility use. We doubled that when we ran our business plan, just to make sure that um, you know, we weren't cutting ourselves short. And so it will really be up um, longer term to the co-op, whether they choose to have individuals pay their own utility bill or whether the co-op pays that. Every unit will be metered separately, so we will have the ability to know which units are using electricity or consuming more or less. Um, and we'll have the ability anytime that the co-op would choose or Homeward Bound um, would choose to convert to individuals paying a direct bill or the co-op paying that bill for the whole community. Um, there's pros and cons to both of those, right? Individuals um, struggling with housing stability often um, have significant uh, money to put upfront just to get a utility account. Um, those kinds of things that end up being a barrier to housing for people. And um, and we also know that that when it's my bill and my usage, then maybe I'm a little more accountable or, you know, careful or paying attention how I use that as well. So, yes.
So for the two bedroom units, are those planned to be families or?
Um, we have uh, the the units themselves are five hundred square foot each, regardless of the number of bedrooms. And uh, so we made the decision because of the small size of the property and the smaller size of the units that we do not want to create overcrowding in the community or in each unit. So we are limiting each unit to two people. We are absolutely welcoming children and we hope to have children. But the typical scenario would be a single parent and a child, or um, in many cases, a grandparent and a child.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, I have a couple uh, questions. Not number one. And yet you you did mention in Sandy that that's probably my main concern as far as giving ARP money up to an organization is that ARP money was given to Michigan City to use for Michigan City people. And I know that you said you'd be willing to open up, you know, for discussions on, you know, doing that. But I know that you and I have spoken approximately two months ago. And where do we stand with that discussion we had two months ago to where we're at today?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Have you discussed it? Have you discussed it with the board? And have they said that they're willing to put a hundred percent Michigan City people in there? Cause I've heard stories that there's there's Michigan City residents right now living in motels that are trying to find somewhere to live.
Uh huh.
And we have to take care of the Michigan City folks first. You know, I know I know that there is homelessness across the United States. But if somebody lives in Lafayette, Indiana, and they're homeless, well, then they need to look at Lafayette, Indiana or somewhere else for that kind of help.
Uh huh.
Uh, because what happens, you know, just like Michigan City, you know, has a lot of organizations for homeless people. That's why a lot of homeless people come to Michigan City because we have the uh, facilities for them, I guess you'd want to say. So I'm going back to what we thought we discussed before, that if ARP money is going to come, I guess, from this councilman, I don't know how the other council people feel about this project, but I want a hundred percent Michigan City people being in those units.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, we definitely talked about this a couple of months ago. And uh, I committed to follow through on that. Um, what? Let me just um, let me just gather myself a minute. The reason I suggested that we spend some time in dialogue is um, we can come up with a whole lot of options. Um, but we really need to deeply understand um, what you're seeking. Um, what does residency mean? Um, what if someone moved out of the community because they couldn't find affordable housing, but they had been a lifelong community member? Um, what if two people apply together in order to live in a unit together? And one is a resident and one is not. So there are so many complex scenarios. Um, what about our other funders? Um, majority of our funding is outside of Michigan City or outside of the government funding for Michigan City. Um, that we want to be able to discuss the consideration of other funders that are supporting LaPorte County. And um, and you and I had kicked around some ideas of is it a percentage of units? Is it a duration of time? How will Michigan City?
I don't I don't think we kicked around any ideas.
Okay.
We didn't give any.
Uh, your microphone, I think.
Uh, we didn't get into any discussion about it.
No, 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 no.
I just kind of gave my viewpoint on it, my stand on it, and asked if you would come back with a uh, a solution. Uh, and I see that there is there is no solution uh, at at this time. And I know that you have other funders, and that's great. I mean, for a project like that, you know, there's projects that we're doing in Michigan City that we try to get outside funding for, you know, everybody, everybody uh, does that. And I'm sure the funders that you have, I'm I'm not, I'm sure that they probably didn't say, well, if Michigan City doesn't give any money, then we're not going to give any money. Cause it's evident they've already given money to the project because they like the project. Whether it would be here or whether it would be in uh, Indianapolis, they like the project. So that's why their foundation gave them money.
Uh huh.
Yeah, and like I said, the money, the federal government was given to Michigan City for Michigan City projects and to be spent on Michigan City people and to try to help uh, correct issues that are taking place in Michigan City, whether it be homelessness, crime, you know, drug abuse. We all, we know what we're talking about here. So, yeah, so that's my stand, that's my uh, stand on it right now and.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate, um, Mr. Prespolinski, that we um, we are really looking to you to suggest how we get together and work through those kind of details. Um, we need to comply with fair housing laws. We need to make sure that we're complying with fair housing laws. We want to make sure that we understand um, what what you're looking for in the request and how that really plays out when we get into the nuances of prioritizing residents.
Well, I guess what what I mean, not to interrupt, but what I'm really looking for is a hundred percent Michigan City residents.
Yeah, I understand.
That's it. That's that's the bottom line. A hundred percent Michigan City residents. Okay? So I don't know if you want to have, if you want to have another meeting, you know, that's up to you and your board to come back to the council and we have a workshop, I guess, to discuss some other options that you may come up with with occupants requirements, but.
I'm going to defer a minute. Uh, Dan, do you have a minute? Do you mind? Um, just for the microphone. Um, let me just recap. Um, uh, Mr. Grandquist does serve on our board. Uh, I think you're probably um, familiar with Dan in Michigan City. We had a few conversations about this ahead of time. Um, Dan does not represent Homeward Bound as an attorney. He serves on the board and happens to also be an attorney. Um, but it was pretty instrumental in just helping me understand some of the complexities of um, just uh, understanding what it is that um, I I should say, how this, the mechanics of this will really work. And that this um, kind of a setting is probably not the best um, place or use of your time or the right skills here from uh, legal brains perhaps being needed to ensure that it contractually will meet the needs of what Michigan City might be seeking and um, that Homeward Bound is actually able to fulfill the obligation as requested from Michigan City. So what I'm trying to say is that we are um, we are absolutely open and agreeable to the concept. But I'm going to let Dan speak to some suggestions about how we might go about next step. Um, perhaps rather than a a public uh, meeting for the discussion.
We're we're part of the community. We want to be a part of it. We want to help the residents that are here. So the main question would be, how do we define a resident? Is it one year, two years? How do we give priority to someone who, you know, maybe been here five years or ten years over someone who's here one year? There's just a lot of little nitty gritty things that we just want to explore, mainly your preferences and how we can fulfill who is a resident. And uh, like Sandy mentioned, if if they if they've been here for thirty years, moved away for one year, two years and want to come back, or whoever's here now, how long do they have to stay here in order to be determined to be a resident? Just little things like that that we want to help out. But we certainly want to comply and favor and support the Michigan City residents. It's just a matter of tweaking that concept of who who of all the residents of all the people that are living here, do they need a a physical address? Do, you know, do they have to be here so many years? A lot of things like that that we would like to work out.
Um, let me cover one thing that I uh, almost always get the question about Phase Two. So I was prepared with Phase Two in an appendix, but um, you haven't asked. So uh, let me go ahead and show that. If you don't mind the slides.
Sandy, if I could.
Sure.
Dr. Cora had a question, so it still might be on Phase One. So let him answer, ask his question, and then you can go ahead with Phase Two.
You know, I had a comment, Mr. President, and the comment is, I hope you understand the sentiment of what uh, a council president is trying to say. You know, certain amount of money has been given to Michigan City to spend for the welfare and benefit of the residents of Michigan City. And there are, as I mentioned, there are a lot of competing priorities for that money. And if we were to allocate this money for something that is not directly benefiting Michigan City residents, so it would be a problem. And I I I I just want to explain why this is such an important thing, you know?
Yes, thank you for that.
I appreciate it.
Uh, there's a couple of slides in the appendix. There you go. Um, the reason I brought this up is really just to see the full cost of the project and to see the full cost of the project related to other percentage of funding um, for Michigan City American Rescue Plan funds. Um, I know you talked about the twenty five percent in Phase One because infrastructure um, in the first phase, it's going to be a significant expenditure, but spread across the full cost of the project is a smaller component. Um, so that side by side, uh, I thought would just help you put in perspective the two phases of the project and uh, just a few highlights about each phase. And Dr. Cora, I appreciate you um, sharing that there are a lot of priorities. I know there's a lot of priorities. Um, I don't know if you're considering any other um, funding for affordable housing developments. I know there uh, is very little activity taking place across LaPorte County. Um, I believe strongly that it takes um, many, many people and organizations to um, bring about change in the way housing is created in um, building capacity to create housing and different types of housing to meet different needs. And you mentioned about a comprehensive approach, um, which I think is true, right? Strategically, you want to think about how you're growing and where you're growing and what do you enable? Um, and I just hope today that you all saw um, the work that Homeward Bound is doing is capable of doing in this community that we have raised significant funds and that we um, are here because we care deeply about providing affordable housing, but also in a different environment, a different type of affordable housing. And to really um, allow this community in this county to see that there is an alternative, to see that housing can not only be affordable, but it can be beautiful. It can be charming. It can be in a nice neighborhood. It doesn't have to be on um, lots that are um, available because they're in blighted neighborhoods. Um, that that there is a different way to think about affordable housing. And we hope to be changing that um, that view, that vision and that conversation.
I'm visualizing Carwick Road again, and I'm looking at the map. And you said it's across from? And you said it's across from.
Potawatomi. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So we're just adjacent to Lake, what's the name of the?
Lakeland Hills.
Thank you.
Lake Hills.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, I had a couple of comments. First of all, I appreciate the work you do. This is, you know, this is very noble work that you're doing. And then you're trying to get into the non-governmental space and trying to solve some problems in the non-governmental space, and I appreciate that. It's just that, it's just that the money that is being asked, the ARPA funds, as I mentioned about earlier, is because it's been given to the Michigan City residents. I think that that's an important thing that we need to consider. For me, I also feel that property taxes are also important as we develop new housing and all, because if we don't have property taxes to sustain, I don't think the city can sustain and provide the services. So I think that's something to consider as we move forward. But no, it's a great concept and I like this, the cooperative nature of this. That's really something that has appealed to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, do any other council members have any other comments? And Sandy, you, great presentation every time I talk to you on the phone, very professional. When we had our meeting, very professional. And you and the Homeward Bound organizations should be very proud of all the work that you're doing and trying to provide for people that are in need and less fortunate than we all are here. Yeah, because like you said, we don't have to worry about where we're going to be laying our head tonight or tomorrow or next month. And I agree that that's a, that's a big issue. And that's one of the things that I'm trying to deal with is homelessness in Michigan City and panhandling and everything that goes along with it, you know, and drug abuse. I don't want to see that, and I know nobody else wants to see that. But as I said, my main, and we're not sitting here right now saying that you're not going to get the money, you're going to get the money, because that's a whole nother process that you got to get sponsors, ordinances, everything like that to get this money approved. And we'll be the board, whether there's approval or not approval, or if it even comes before the council, because there's no longer an ARP committee like there was before under the last administration. Now the city council does it. So I want to thank you for your presentation and thank you for everybody coming. And we will see the next step where we go from here.
Could I just take a minute to understand next step and see if we can agree on next step so I understand what actions I might take and how I support that?
Well, we don't have our council attorney here, but I guess my, as I said throughout this whole process, my main concern is Michigan City residents being put into these units because it's Michigan City funding that's going to be used. And just like the doctor alluded to, that that ARPA money, we got $16 million of it. We're down to $2 million, I think, now. And there's still needs in the community. Every council person sitting up here, you know, in their wards, they have things that they'd like to get done. And I know the mayor plans on having a meeting and talking to the council people on other items that they'd like to have done or see in their ward. So, I don't know, you'd have to go back to your board and decide what you want to do on who's coming and who's going and.
Yeah, you mentioned the council attorney. Does that make sense, Dan? Yes? We could reach out to the council attorney and initiate some of the discussions from a legal standpoint?
Mr. President, I have a suggestion and.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I think we need to get together ourselves and the mayor and see, because there are so many things that came up that required this ARPA money. So what are those priorities? How are we going to prioritize and that? And then see where this particular, particular need fits in there and then, so it takes, I think we need to do a little bit of homework before we can get back to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate you wanting to take care with that money and to have discussions about it. Beginning after the election is when I started conversations with Mayor Nelson Deitch. You may not be aware that we came before the American Rescue Plan Committee, Michigan City. When funding first, the process was in place, I should say, not really a process. There really was not a process for externals to request funding other than the nonprofit kind of projects that you did. We were told at that time by that administration that there was no priority for funding for construction projects. And when Mayor Nelson Deitch, when the election had a different result than the current or the previous administration, we had a conversation and she was willing to open that dialogue. She has opened the door for these continued conversations. She has prioritized or helped to prioritize the conversations initiating with bringing Mr. York to the conversation and when I met with Mr. Prespolinski. And what we're ready to do is move along in the process. I understand in the back, you may be deciding how you will spend those funds, but I believe I understand from you, Mr. Prespolinski, that an ordinance and a sponsor for the ordinance is required and that really would be our next step, but also in conjunction to try to work out the details of your request to prioritize Michigan City residents so that that could be incorporated into the ordinance. Would that be a reasonable, I mean, is that a correct statement of some steps that we may take to continue to?
No, what I'd like to do is, as the councilman Koi brought up, to, we could sit down with the mayor and talk to her about this whole discussion and other projects that she may have on the table and go from there. And then as a council, make a decision whether we even want to move forward, you know, supporting this project and go from there. Yeah, but the process and you asked me if it would be, you know, get the ordinance going, then we can work out the details as the ordinance is going. The way I like to operate is you get all the details worked out first, then you bring it to the council, and then we pass it down the road. Because what will happen, if it gets tied up, that ordinance can be tabled.
Sure.
Forever.
Sure.
It could be on the table forever because your organization doesn't have the answers that this council wants to know and wants to hear and in order to support it. Otherwise, we could take it right off the table and just defeat the ordinance and it's over with. So it's always better to get the details taken care of first before you bring the legislation to the council.
Yeah, I think that's the process we're hoping to be part of and trying to understand that. So what I understand is that you'll meet with the mayor, have some discussions about the funding and decide if it comes as a council, if anyone would move that ordinance or sponsor that ordinance.
Pardon? I'm sorry.
I said, I understand, I'm just trying to reiterate what, I understand you, you'll take as your next action, that you do want the convening that you.
Let me, let me, let me finish.
Thank you.
We will meet with the mayor and then we'll go from there. I'm not, I'm not saying, you know, I can't tell anybody not to bring an ordinance forward. That's every council person's legal right if they want to put an ordinance together and bring it out in front of the city council. But the right thing to do is to sit down with the mayor and let's iron it out, iron out what we, what needs to be spent and where we're going to go, what the priorities are, and then we can work through the process. If the process gets to that point.
So, Mr. Prespolinski, you have been very gracious over the last couple of months, taking lots of phone calls and meeting with me. And I will trust that you will shepherd those conversations and that process and that you will stay in touch or allow me to check in periodically just to get an update.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as far as trying to get a meeting together with the mayor to talk to the council about this issue, I will give her a call tomorrow morning.
Okay. And then please reach out as soon as you have an idea, thought, whether it's the council attorney or another approach, to be in more specific dialogue about the city's request to prioritize residents. We will absolutely make the time for that conversation and work through that process with you.
Okay.
Mr. President, I had one other comment.
Yes, sir, Doctor.
Yeah. You know, I think with, in terms of the funding that you're waiting for, I think you have two other requests that have been sent, one to the Healthcare Foundation, and then the other one is for the Ready Grant. So as you're working on that, we'll try to figure out what the priorities are for the remaining ARPA money. I think it can be a parallel process. You work on the other two grants and then we'll keep working on our priorities and then we can, we can figure out about the residency requirements and things like that.
Okay.
Process and then, and then at the appropriate time, if there is consensus to include this in the priorities for the ARPA money, then we'll bring it back here. I think that's what probably would be the best way of handling it.
Yeah, let me just reiterate, just because of the words you used, that those grants have already been submitted and we're waiting to disposition. The Ready Grant by the mayor June timeframe, we feel pretty strongly that if we do not have a local public match, we will not remain competitive for that grant. So there is a sense of urgency for us in the.
Thanks for clarifying that, because that I was not aware of, that there is a requirement for a local match for that. Okay, thank you.
And what is that deadline to have that submitted?
So the grant has been submitted and the Ready Grant is actually a regional submission to the Indiana Department of Economic, I D E C. And it's a regional strategy that is submitted. So we entered our project and Michigan City entered a project into that. But when the funds come back to the region for dispersment or for decision-making, that is when they really start vetting the details of the project. At the time we submitted, we said that we were requesting local public funds, but that we had not secured them. It helped that we submitted a letter of support stating that the mayor did desire to partner with Homeward Bound and to support our affordable housing initiative. But it is in that timeframe that they'll really be looking at whether or not that has occurred for our project or will occur for our project and whether or not we remain in the running for funding with that grant or not. Does that answer your question? All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sandy, and thank you, thank you group and everybody that came here this evening.
Yeah, thank you so much for the time.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it. You do have contact information for me, I have business cards I can leave as well. If you have questions once you leave, anything that I can provide additional information, we have pages and rooms and spreadsheets and lots of detail if there's things that you're looking for beyond what was presented today.
Yeah, did you say you had business cards for?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, just passed them out. I don't need one. I have your contact information already. So, all right, thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.